Great. Good, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the joint workshop meeting between the City of Fort Lauderdale City Commission and the Citizens Police Review Board. This meeting is a long time coming, and we really appreciate the members of the board taking time out of their day to be able to come and meet with the city commission and give us an update as to what's been going on and provide the commission a little bit of some information on issues that have come up before you, and perhaps we can discuss strategies going forward. So if the clerk could please take the role of the commission?
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Are you here?
Commissioner Sorenson.
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
Here. And I now defer to Mr. Eichner to take the role of your committee.
There we go. Good afternoon, commission. My name is Paul Eichner. I'm the chair of the police advisory board. With me today are board members Mike Johnson and Mark Dickerman. We have some other civilian members who are not present. I'm not sure who of the police force.
So why don't you call the role? Do you have a roster of your, of your board? We happen to have one there for you.
Thank you. Bernadette Norris Weeks. I don't believe she's here. I believe she had some issues that.
Could you speak a little bit more into your microphone?
Bernadette Norris Weeks is not here. I believe she may have had some issues that. Officer Sabrina Byer. Okay, thank you. Bernard Beckerstein. Avery Figueres. Antonia Johnson. Mark Dickerman. Carol Lee Ortman. Michael Johnson. And myself. So one, two, we have a quorum.
You do have a quorum. Okay, great. So thank you all for being here today. I appreciate the police officers also being here today. So I defer to you, Mr. Eichner, and if you could please give us your presentation.
Okay. Thank you all for allowing us the time to present the status of the board with you today. I'd like to get some, ultimately get some input from you all as far as what direction you'd like this board to take. We are an advisory board. We are here by virtue of the ordinance that you all gave life to. We are under the city manager's direction, I believe, for most part, as far as the day-to-day operation. With me to my left is Christina Kurish. She's the former chair. She was the chair for a number of years prior to my being on the board and subsequent to my being on the board. I'm going to turn the chair, microphone over to her right now real quickly. Much of what is on the agenda is something that she had worked on and the board collectively has worked on, but.
Okay, great.
She has an interest in this, so I want.
Okay. Christina, how are you this morning?
Good morning, everybody. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm just going to start at the top of what I think is the most important thing to point out here. So you all may recall that the Citizens Police Review Board made recommendations for changes to the ordinance in August, September of 2020. To date, those changes, February of 2022, are still pending. Our board had been told multiple times since December of 2020 by the legal advisor to the board, by the city manager, and I believe it was also conveyed through Allen, that they did not see any issues with the proposed changes. And we just kept getting delayed and told that the FOP was taking issue, claiming that those recommended changes needed to be bargained for. We had also been told during meetings that the FOP was also taking issue with the ordinance as it currently is functioning. So, you know, I think it's extremely frustrating to a board that's been tasked with representing the community when we're able to work together, civilians and law enforcement officials, to make recommendations, and then essentially it sounds like we're getting stopped by a bargaining entity that we know is pretty powerful and is issuing endorsements to some of the people on the dais. So I think at some point, the leadership of this city needs to step in and say, this is what is happening with this ordinance. So I'll stop there if anybody has any response to that.
Okay. So Allen, do you have those specific items that Christine referenced?
So with regards to the ordinance, we had gone ahead and made revisions to the ordinance, which the union thereafter asserted some objections, a few objections. One being that it's a bargain, it's an issue that needs to be bargained, which we don't necessarily agree with. And then there were some other revisions they wanted to make to the ordinance. So we had a meeting, I can't recall, I guess it's a couple of months back, to discuss it further with Gene Gibbons, the FOP's attorneys. And ultimately, it's going to be a decision of you as board, as a commission, as to what revisions you'll be comfortable with. I'm not going to necessarily make the union's arguments for them. Again, it's, it's neither here nor there with regards to what changes you all want to make. We just need to know what those changes are going to be. And as you are well aware, we haven't had the opportunity to meet jointly with the board, so it's been a while. It's been delayed and rescheduled quite a few times. So again, we're aware of what the issues are, but ultimately, it's going to have to come before you for a decision with regards to what changes you are comfortable with.
Mayor?
Yes.
I was just going to ask, if we can have the union come up and share their perspective, that could be helpful, kind of help further this.
That's, that's fine. I just haven't heard anything specific.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear, is specifics from them that.
Well, well, wait a minute. Christina, could you tell us what were the specific items that were to be addressed? And, and then we can hear from the union as to their interest in, in, in addressing.
Sure. So I have a copy of the ordinance that our board received in December of 2020. We were provided the draft ordinance that had the changes. So one of the main changes was instead of receiving some complaints, we used to only receive category one complaints, which I will generally describe as the most serious. As a board, we decided that we'd be willing to take on the work to take a look at all complaints because, again, we're representing the community. So it was a change from category one to all complaints. And with that change, it meant that it was at the conclusion of the police department's and internal affairs investigation. We would get the file. There was another change that said that the police.
Okay, hold on. Christina, hold on. Go ahead, Mayor.
No, I was just going to say, all complaints, you realize that there are a lot of.
We realize that it's expensive.
Nominal, you know, sometimes frivolous complaints. Do you feel that that might burden the, the board with the, with an agenda that might be a little overwhelming for the board? That's why it was this limited?
There's always the potential for that, but I think that we're not here just representing ourselves. We are representing the community. And if we said that we're going to do this, and as a group, we think that it's worth it, then we're going to try. And if we need to come back and we're like, hey, we bit off more than we can chew, you all are happy to work with us and are reasonable people.
Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And Christina, just for the benefit of those of us who might not know all this, can you define category one? What's the difference between category one versus all complaints?
Well, I think just generally, you can think of category one as being the most serious. So that was the first thing. And I want to remind everybody that anything that the Citizens Police Review Board does is advisory only to the city manager.
Right.
So Chris is welcome to ignore our feedback the way he's welcome to ignore anyone else's feedback. Nothing that we do is binding on anybody except for the fact that it lives in a public record. The other thing that was in the revised ordinance was that the police department was, we had added language that the police department would provide us with annual reports containing a summary of all administrative, internal affairs investigations, and response to resistance. So for a number of years, at the end of a year, we were not receiving any statistics as to what was being generated by the internal affairs department or what response to resistance looked like at this department. So we had been asking for it, but for continuity of a board, it makes more sense to have something like this in there because under my leadership, I might remember every year that I asked for this. But under Paul's leadership, he may not remember, or the next person. So for the, for the purpose of consistency in a board, and these are certainly the types of things that the public are aware of. Now, I understand that we were in a different situation back in 2020 when this ordinance came forward because we had different police leadership, and we've been told more information will be public. So it's possible if those promises for records to be released are met by the new leadership, this isn't necessary, but I think it's certainly appropriate to memorialize it in there. And there was one other change.
Okay.
It was the board may also make a recommendation to the city manager that an employee's actions who were reviewed should receive training as part of the resolution. And again, we're not saying Officer Sorenson has to receive training. We're saying, hey, it might be good. And we've done it, and past FOP leadership was supportive of it. When they would sit in the room with us and they'd be like, yeah, maybe this person needs some better conflict resolution skills or something. But again, Chris is free to ignore anything that we recommend, so I don't really see what the issue is. And that's a summary of what.
Okay. So, so changing the scope of, of your, of your jurisdiction from category one complaints to all complaints, record of responses from eternal, from internal affairs with regard to resolution of, of the complaints, and officer retraining, should it become necessary? Am I catching those correctly?
That's the gist of it, yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's only a recommendation of training.
Well, everything is a recommendation. Every advisory board is a recommendation. And in your particular case, when I say you, meaning this board, it does filter through the city manager. The other advisory boards come directly to the, to the commission. So, so does someone from the, does someone from the union want to respond? Is there a representative that, are you prepared to respond? Do you have any interest in responding today? I mean, I don't want to put you on.
Mayor, can I ask a few questions before we hear the police testimony on this?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just, I have a few questions. I just want to wrap my mind around where we're going.
Yeah.
So is there, is there a position or what is the, the mission of this board? So just help me understand that before we go forward, so I can see if what you're asking kind of aligns with what you've been charged to do.
The board was created in 1994, and the purpose of this board was to assist in maintaining the confidence of Fort Lauderdale citizens that complaints of alleged police officer misconduct are being thoroughly investigated by the internal affairs division.
It was a, it was a citizen watchdog committee to make sure that the complaints were followed through on and not just shoved under the rug. I was, I remember when this board was first proposed, it came from the request of multiple communities, the African-American community, the LGBT community. Fort Lauderdale was a different community 25 years ago. We all know that, right? And I'd like to think that we have matured and, and become more responsible individuals, but this board continues to be that watchdog, and, and that's basically the, the mandate that the board has been given.
Okay, so the mandate is basically it's a citizen watchdog group to see if complaints are being followed up on.
Correct.
From, okay, so that's what, that's what you all are doing. And I know when I read some of the backup, we did, we, we will have some best practices from the study. There was a national group, Chris, who was the national group that kind of went around and they did some best practices with police departments around the country? I know this in the backup somewhere.
Right, so we, we are in the process of using the National Police Foundation.
Maybe that's it. So the National Police Foundation, has their report come out yet?
They're actually in town now.
Okay.
Doing some additional interviews, and when they're done with their review, then my guess is we'll have an opportunity to sit down with them, and then they will, at some point, issue a, a final report, so.
And are they weighing in on what we're talking about today, also some of the best practices for groups like this?
I think it's going to be very comprehensive in what they weigh in on.
Okay.
I haven't seen a report, so I don't want to sit here and say, yes, I've seen it, but I would suspect.
Okay, so when I'm kind of hearing everything too, and I appreciate what you all are doing here locally, I'm also seeing what else is going on, because I know I actually was interviewed by this group, but I was curious about what's, what they came up with, what their findings were. So I kind of want to hear about what they are thinking also, probably before I make some decision today, and maybe we're not making a decision today, but that's one thought. So I wanted to understand the mission. I wanted to see what's happening nationally in terms of best practices around our country based on some issues we've all gone through together as a country. And then I, I hear you referring to FOP. Do we also get an opinion from PD, or are we just focusing on FOP? Just help me understand the process.
So I think it's important for you to understand that this board consists of nine individuals.
Right.
Some of us are appointed by you and your colleagues, and some of us are appointed by the chief of police.
Okay.
So when I say to you, the board unanimously supported this recommendation, the board supported that, that includes those officers who have volunteered.
PD.
Yes.
So that you're, so.
So this, they have not been excluded from, from this discussion, and these motions for recommendations pass.
Okay, so we, we currently have PD sitting on the board, but then when we're referring to FOP, that's a, they are not on the board, so that's where we're.
They are not on the board, but you can probably assume that some of the members on the board are also members of that organization.
No, I understand. I'm just procedurally just trying to wrap my mind around kind of all these things, so before we get into the details, so. Okay, good. So that helps, just what I'm thinking. Thank you for just laying the.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Yes, Mark? Can, can you, yeah, thank you. It's on or off?
It's on.
Okay.
Commissioner Morales, I want to provide you with another resource. I'm a member of a national organization called NACOLE, N-A-C-O-L-E, which is an organization of oversight boards throughout the country. which is an organization of oversight boards throughout the country. Through my membership with them, there have been various seminars and so forth. But more important, I got connected with three other oversight boards, New York City, Houston, Texas, and Minnesota-St. Paul. And through them, I'm able to see what other boards are doing as well as what the national organization recommends boards should do. So that's a very good resource to take a look from the citizen's side as opposed to the police officer's side.
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, would a representative from the police union wanna, you know, talk about this? I think they're important. Hello, gentlemen. Tess.
All right, we're good. I didn't read the post-it. I'm Scott Mosley, the new elected FOP president for Lodge 31. To the left of me is Jameson Jones, the first vice president of the union. I do respect everyone's time and energy with regards to this. And I will make it very clear that the union is all about transparency and working together with the community, both the commission and the CPRB. I do want to let everyone know though, of the matters in which we're talking about right now, we've only had one meeting with regards to this matter. So we are always looking forward to continue this process and be able to have input on this, just as well as everyone has their say and they wanna have some say within this process.
Scott, when you said you had one meeting, one meeting amongst yourselves or one meeting with the board?
With the board.
Okay, and how far back-
With city management, I'm sorry.
Okay, how far back was that? Do you remember?
That was approximately November of last year, so.
Of 2021?
Correct.
Okay, and did you, did anything result from that?
Yes, so at that time, we were presented with what the changes were that I guess city staff or the board had recommended. We sat down with our council and provided to the city what we believe that the FOP's position on certain changes would be made as well. And to date, I don't believe we've sat down since those changes have been exchanged until we find ourselves here today.
So have responses been submitted to, to your board?
No, the only responses we have got have been through either Chris or Attorney Weisman. And they've been somewhat informal, you know? Brad would say, oh, there was an email, you know, or we would get a memo from Chris saying what his office has determined. But they were all just very, very much a summary.
So if that's their impression of the responses, is there any way that you might be able to formalize a response so that they, they can go back and talk and discuss these, these responses amongst themselves so that we can decide whether we're gonna move forward on any of them?
So the, yeah, the union will always look for a mutual agreement to a viable solution.
Okay, so, so how, so now that you've, you've, you've heard the request, you understand the issues, you have sort of responded in a way that you felt represents the, the opinion of the, of the union. Is it possible to formalize that in something in writing and maybe get that to them in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, so we have our attorney that represents the FOP that would, you know, have open dialogue and be, you know, will be moving forward with us.
So you'd be able to have those in the next couple of weeks?
Mayor, I don't, Mayor Allen, well, here, city attorney, I, I don't wanna speak for the FOP, but since they take the position that it's, it's a bargaining issue, Mr. Gibbons isn't here, but he may have an issue with the fact that they would present something formally to the board versus more formally to the city. And I wanted to note also that when we met, I think it was November, it was a couple months ago, a few months ago, we were about, I think, I can't remember the timeline, but we were about to meet with and do a joint workshop with the board. So we were waiting to sort of hash this out and it kept getting delayed and delayed. So that's why we're a little further ahead.
Right, but I, I don't really think it needs to be delayed anymore. There's no real obstacles, so, so-
I think we, my office can certainly provide information to the board with regards to what's been presented by the union. I just don't wanna put them in a bad spot because, again, their counsel's not here. That makes me a little uncomfortable. And if they're taking the position, it's something that needs to be bargained, which we don't agree with. But if that's the position they wanna take, I don't wanna this- But their attorney's not here.
Yeah. Wait, 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 they, I'm not asking them for responses today. I don't think anyone's asking. I don't wanna put anybody on the spot. The idea is to just move this process along. So if there are responses, then just put it down. And if they say, well, we wanna preface this with, we don't think any of these are appropriate to, to be determined by the city commission. They should be part of a collective bargaining, bargaining agreement and they should be part of the union contract, then, then that can be said also. We, we get it, but I don't want that to be used as an, I don't think anyone on the commission wants to, wants this to be, you know, left up in the air. If the, if one of our advisory boards, if our community is looking for answers, I think it behooves, you know, all of us to provide answers to the community, don't you think?
Well, we can, we can immediately, almost immediately, provide a copy of what was proposed to us from the union. They're not proposing it. We're communicating that to the board. So we'll provide that to the board.
Are these your responses to the board or their responses?
It's the FOPs. So the FOP shared with us what changes they want and how they wanna change it.
In response to these requests?
Correct. So I can forward that to the board rather than have the union do it.
Why hasn't that happened before now?
Because we're-
We're having a workshop and even when we started this, everything's ambiguous until we ask for specifics. Why can't we have a workshop with everything on the table? I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and put out your fires. I'd rather have all the facts in front of me before I opine or, or, or move on something. I'm not gonna, you know, sit here and, and be the mediator because nobody has anything-
Right.
Presented to us, but you all have what it is you want, what it is they want, what it is he recommends. And there's an attorney that's not in the room. We're wasting our time.
And Mayor, Mayor, if, Mayor, if I can just, in answer to the question you posed to me, Commissioner McKenzie sort of hit on it. But the reason we haven't brought it to the board is because we haven't brought it to you. I'm not gonna bring something to the board that you all have not been privy to. We were gonna do that.
Hold on a second. When this agenda is put together, who are the proven authorities? Isn't it?
It's me.
And who else? It goes, it goes to John.
I had input from-
And it goes to him, right? So if it wasn't ready, why are we dealing with it?
It's not that it's not ready, it's just-
You didn't present it to us. You just said you didn't present it to us, right?
No, because we were going to schedule a workshop back in the day and this is why we're having it today.
But don't have this now just to appease us. Just have the information so we can be well informed and we could debate facts, the issues and make sure we're on the right side of, of, of-
So then I'll, let me just put that, let me put that ordinance on a future conference agenda. We'll have a discussion with the commission and then, then we'll share it with the CPRB board.
I, I don't wanna speak for everybody else, but am I-
I, I don't disagree with you. So that's why I'm just trying to move this conversation along. That's, that was it. So you'll give it to the, to the board?
Sure.
And, and the board can issue, send a memorandum to us, your, your responses to, to what the union has sent to you.
You know, I appreciate that, but with all due respect, I wanna point out that this board has been asking for a joint workshop since March of 2021. And every meeting that we've had, we've tried to follow up on this issue. So while there is a portion of it that is a waste of time because things could have been queued up, I wanna tell you that I personally appreciate you being willing to push and say, get it done. Because if you're taking volunteers' time who are supposed to be representing the community, don't waste our time and blow us off because somebody doesn't wanna do it.
Right, I agree with you, one of us said, but don't, don't waste my time either.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement with that and this should have been moved along more quickly. But there's, whatever, whatever we can accomplish here today at this joint workshop, I think is to move this process along. So if we could have those done within the next week or so, sent to the board and let the board send a memorandum to us through a communication and we will respond, all right? And we will, if we have to reconvene, you know, this workshop, because I'm not adjourning this workshop, we're just gonna reconvene it at some point. And, and if you don't mind, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have the opportunity to review the responses and come to some decision here on the commission.
Mr. Mayor, as a suggestion, as a suggestion, Mr. Mayor, is it possible, as the city manager suggested, to put it on a pre-conference agenda? Establish that date now so at least that there's a timeframe in which people have to act prior to that date coming forward?
Does that make sense to all of you? Put it on an afternoon agenda? I, I have no problem with it.
It does. Do we want the bargaining to happen first or after?
Well, the bargaining can't happen until we're bargaining, you know, until the union contract is being discussed. But this is, we don't, I don't wanna presuppose their answer. I don't know what the response is.
So we'll talk first?
Yeah.
And then bargain-
Fall into the abyss.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I get it.
Come here, can I ask, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so there's three elements. Are, are, do you all consider these three elements, I don't, forgive me for the wrong term, but are they bargaining? Are they necess, is bargaining required formally for each of the three?
Correct, so, so the, the opinion of our attorney is that any changes to the ordinance whereby it affects the terms and conditions of employment or the disciplinary process is a mandatory item of bargaining.
Bargaining, okay.
City has some disagreements about that. However, in good faith, since back as late as last year, we did engage with the city sending us a proposal on changes. We then responded to that with our changes. And our position as it stands today is still that we are willing and actively able to engage in that process when the city so chooses. It just, for whatever reason, it-
Just stopped, slowed or stopped?
Yeah, since November.
So what is the next, what is the term of the next contract up?
It's October 1st of this year.
October of this year, right?
Correct.
Right, so we're in, we're in the, we're in the, the scope of having this, if we decide to make changes, it can be put into the new contract.
Okay, so hold on, let me, let me just keep going if I can.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just starting to ask some questions. Okay, great, that all makes sense. Can you share with us, just, just so that I have a sense to start noodling on this, what your position was on these three items? Or what the attorneys, or are you able to share whatever their thoughts were? And if you can't, that's fine, but-
I, I wouldn't wanna speak on his behalf.
On the attorney's behalf? Okay, so we have to wait till the attorneys talking to city manager to understand the position, I guess?
There are a couple of statutes in which, you know, are, are in the play in this and, and with that, I don't wanna-
Don't wanna, okay, so the attorney sent our, the city attorney, your position. Is that right? Am I just understanding that right? Okay, on these three items, at least and maybe more.
On the entire ordinance changes.
Entire ordinance changes.
On March 18th of 21.
On March 18th, 21, okay. So that's what you have, Alan. Is that right? Correct, make sure I'm tracking, okay. So then you're good with Alan getting that to the board, the review board? Is that?
Of course.
You're, okay, you're good with that, okay. And so, I'm just not clear, and Alan, why, maybe you already said this, but March of 2021, why a year later was this not, did we not do anything with this or?
Well, we were working with the board on, first, we, we needed to agree on, on changes. And then we reviewed that, we have to review it with management. And then the union began some objection at that point. There were discussions between COVID and the rescheduling of the workshops and everything else. It just-
Okay, so the board's already started reviewing this? Is that what you're saying?
No, they haven't reviewed, they don't know what the FOP's issues are.
They don't know a-
Right, that's why I'm saying why. So you're just saying COVID.
Management, because before we engage with the board, management and the legal office have to deal with the FOP. Because again, if it is something that's bargainable, we have certain strictures there that we have to follow.
So you guys have to work it out before you send it to the board? Is that what you're saying?
Unnecessarily, it depends. So it depends on the issues here. And, but we did, to your question as to why it took a while, we have to engage not only between each other and with the FOP, with their counsel.
Okay.
A lot of back and forth in that regard.
Got it.
So that we can establish exactly where we're at so that we can decide what course we follow. Cause I don't wanna get into bad faith, I don't wanna get into any sort of-
Sure, so you've done that, you've done that, now you're able to get it to the board?
I'm able to get it to the board. What we haven't resolved is the issue of whether it's bargaining or not.
Right.
Again, we have different positions and we probably need a couple of conversations on that.
Right.
But, because if it is deemed to be, and I don't want to invite any sort of grievance, if it for some reason is a bargaining issue, then we need to follow the right procedures because we don't wanna get into a situation where like, let's say, for example, today, if we started bargaining, we can't do that, right?
Right, got it.
Right, so we, we just need to follow the right process once we have exactly, know exactly what place we're in.
Okay, so we're getting it to the board now and then we're, Mayor, just so I'm tracking, now we're setting a date for, tell me again now what the date, what we're doing.
I think we're gonna try to put it on the conference agenda.
Conference agenda for us as a commission to discuss-
With, with the board.
With the police review board.
Right.
Okay, and ideally, obviously, I'd, I'd like the FOP and-
Of course, all, all stakeholders.
So we'll talk about that. And when, are we saying in a month from now or what are we, I didn't catch the timing.
Well, let's see, today's the 15th. Our next meeting is the first and then the 15th again on March.
Now, does the review board, Mayor, have to meet before we meet with them?
Yes.
I just don't-
When's your next meeting? Second Monday, so that would be March 8th. So we could meet right at March 15th or we could meet on April 5th? Either one. March 14th? Okay, so why don't we, why don't we-
That's not right, it's March 15th. It's March 15th.
Yeah, instead of March 15th, why don't we push it over to April 5th? Because it doesn't give us enough, any, enough time to put it on the agenda one day before. So let's just say April 5th. Does that make sense to everyone on the commission? Okay.
Yeah.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Um, one of the things that hasn't been discussed here is the, I made a reference to it, the fact that when we were told that the FOP was taking issue with the proposed changes, we were also told, and they were also taking issue with the ordinance as it stands today. So-
That is true.
So we need to address everything, not just a pending ordinance. I mean, if the solution is take the ordinance and throw it in the fire, then they need to just say that now.
No, it's, it's not. The, the changes that you're gonna be provided includes the changes that tweak and also the recommendations they have for the existing ordinance.
They do.
It includes everything.
Okay, all right, good.
All right, great.
Now, there was, there was somebody that signed up to speak.
I have one question.
All right, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I know we just talked about a lot of things and you hit it, but who determines if it's bargainable? We can come back in with all the information and if it's not deemed that it's bargainable, we're just gonna have another discussion.
If we don't-
Who, who determines that?
If we don't come to some sort of agreement on the issues, it would have to be grieved and arbitrated.
Well, Commissioner, honestly-
But again, to the mayor's point, we're coming up on-
Coming up to the, to the end of the contract anyway, so it falls right into place, whether it's bargainable or not.
Still doesn't tell me, based on what I've heard.
Right.
They're saying, after we put all this stuff on the table, they go back and forth, then it still could be deemed bargainable or not deemed bargainable. So who makes that determination? Not wait for the contract and they sit at the table like they always do and, and they negotiate on behalf of their union? No, but, no, no.
It would be an arbitrator would make that decision.
Is that what you're saying?
Either we come to an agreement, if we don't come to an agreement-
Then it's bargainable.
It would have to be grieved, but to your point, Mayor, by the time we get that grievance set up and, and decided, we'll be full into bargaining for, into the next contract. So it's gonna actually be easier at that point to just do it as part of the normal contract.
So if you do not agree before our next meeting, then it goes through the processes to, to get to the, the contract in October to be negotiated.
Correct. And I'll have conversation-
So that's the answer I was looking for.
Mr. Gibbons and I get along very well and we have good relationships, so we'll keep discussing it and hopefully we'll come to an agreement.
And Alan, just so I'm understanding, the, there's three items is the FOP's position And Alan, just so I'm understanding that there's three items is the FOP's position that all three of those are bargainable? And then what's our position? Are, are all three bar, do we disagree with all three or?
Honestly, I, I, I don't have any disagreement with any three and how it's being proposed. I do not think, and I'm not going to put words into the FOP's mouth.
Right.
But the issue with providing the, uh, the, the, uh, I'm sorry, the summary of all administrative internal investigations on a yearly basis. I don't believe that's that issue. It's really the ones dealing with expanding beyond, beyond the part one.
Right.
Or the, right, part one complaints or, uh, as well as to the recommendation-
Training.
Able to be made to the city manager. So I believe there's really two issues we're dealing with.
Two issues that what?
Sorry, three with the training as well.
Yep. Three that what?
Cause there's really four issues.
Right.
So I think the one issue with regards to the annual reporting that they've, they've asked for, that, that's not an issue. It's public record anyway. Uh, but-
But that's not an issue for who? For the city or for FOP?
For anyone.
For anyone? Okay.
There's just three issues.
But do the three, do you think the three, is it your position, the three are not bargainable?
I don't believe that they are, but again, I'm-
Right. That's what I was asking. They think they are. I'm just understanding perspective. They think they would-
He first started. He didn't believe they were bargainable. Now 20 minutes later, he's saying that it may go to October and be bargained. So I'm just confused as, you know, how do you get there?
I don't make the decision. So-
Yeah, but you, but you, you made a comment and you're, you're, you're my attorney. You're the city's attorney.
And that's our position.
Right. If that's your position, that's what I need to hear. Not all the other rambling to confuse me in how I get to a decision on a legal piece, which is you're, you're the legal guru, not me.
To be clear, we don't think it's bargainable. They think it does.
That's what I want to hear.
Yeah. Okay. Good. So let me just, so is it-
Thanks.
In terms, in terms of going forward, does this process make sense to you all in terms of? The board's going to get the findings, right? Or you're, they're going to get your analysis. They're going to process that, then they're going to, uh, we're going to have a, they're going to meet together and then we're going to have a joint meeting. Us all together again. Is that good?
That seems like a continuation of the process that we've been engaged in with the exception of obviously involvement of the commission.
Right. And then it'd be good to have your attorney here next time?
Yeah. I mean, here's what, what it really boils down to is that this is not the forum under which the FOP is going to collectively bargain out an issue. Uh, but, but we are committed to bargaining out those issues to reach what we believe the, the FOP and the city can, can find that mutual agreement on, on many of those items.
So then I just don't know what the perp, go ahead, Alan.
Right. So, so to-
Why should we?
Right. So if, if basically the, the FOP sticks to their position that it's something that is bargainable, right?
Yeah.
They're not going to come here and go tit for tat on the different various things they have issues with. Cause that would be us or them bargaining in, in a forum that they're not supposed to be doing it, right?
So-
So it's going to depend on that. Obviously I can, I can show you what revisions are on paper and I can sort of explain what it does to the ordinance. But to get their official position would take them, uh, it would take an agreement between us that it's non-bargainable.
So based on Ben's point, there's no way a decision can be made here with us. So why are we, why are we dealing with it? Why are we publicly dealing with an issue that at the end of the day, um, we can't negotiate, um, the attorney's not going to show up. That's evident today. But you pause for him to say that you would hate to say anything in, in his absence. But the way I'm reading this, and you, anyone up here can help me, um, this should be something discussed by the, the two entities here. Uh, and then bargain at the end, uh, as to whether or not, um, it's bargainable. Instead of sitting here for two hours and at the end of the day, cause they're shaking their heads and she's shaking her head another way and-
Well, I think we haven't gone to that point yet.
But I think there's no way you can do that this year. Am I correct? Am I hearing that?
Correct.
Well, um-
It was brought up today, Commissioner. It was brought up today, Commissioner, to bring the issue to a head so that there would be some discussion because it got waylaid and stalled somewhere in the abyss. And we may not be able to get resolution from you all today because of those reasons.
Mm-hmm.
We needed to bring the issue forward to get it moving again because it had stalled.
Because you never really got an answer to your questions.
So, so help me out, Mayor.
Right.
So if, if we get to what a recommendation collectively or consensus here, the managers takes that back and say to-
Us. To us.
That-
These are the, these are the recommendations.
But then if they don't agree to the recommendations, it goes to October to negotiation with bargaining. Am I correct?
Yeah, but I haven't, no, none of us have heard their responses yet.
They're, they're checking their heads.
No, they, they haven't, they haven't responded.
But they said clearly that they cannot do this in this form.
Yeah, we're not going to get their response.
I, I, but you have received, you have received a communication from the union with regard to each of these requests. Is that not correct, Alan?
We've received their revisions, the red line, yes.
Right. So the board has not received it. They're entitled to hear, receiving it. And then we have an opportunity to meet again with our community, the board, to see how they wish to respond. If the, if the union says, this is our response, notwithstanding that, we, we think any changes that, that might result need to come through the collective bargaining process, that I understand. But, but this is very, this has been very, very productive. And I think that the board needs to have those responses received formally. You can, you can encapsulate them in some kind of memorandum to the board and then we'll meet again in April to see how the commission wants to respond. And that's really how, how this goes down. It's how the commission wants to respond. So I think that going forward, let's go with that process and, and Commissioner, I think that, uh, I think that we will accomplish a good deal between now and April.
Alan, can-
I'm just trying to understand.
I know, I know.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
At some point I'd like to weigh in if I can.
Is it allowable, Alan, for you to give to the board? FOP's responses? I mean, is that legally allowable to be done?
Yes, we can do that.
You can? Okay.
Let me just interject though, real, real quick. I wanted to get a couple of words in here because none of that process actually has to happen. I can take the information that's been provided by our attorney, recommenda- recommendation by the board, feedback from the FOP. And I can make a decision and put something on the agenda in first reading and bring an ordinance forward and we see what happens. So we don't have to do all this round robin thing. We've been trying to do it because we've got a good working relationship with the FOP and it's always better if we can get to a mutually agreeable answer, which is why this may be drawn out longer than it takes. Because going through a grievance process is convoluted, it's expensive, it, it ruins, uh, working conditions and working relationships. So I, I try not to get there if, if we don't have to. But we can certainly share the FOP's comments back with the board and we can, I'll schedule that conference meeting. But if you all want it to move fast, I can take the feedback I've gotten thus far, put it on an agenda and we'll see what happens.
I'm going to ask one more question. If you can do that, as you have clearly stated and we heard in other, um, facts being given to us, then what and why it's taken us so long from 2021 to get to 2023 to even sit here? And try to, you know, mediate this? I mean, what?
Yeah, we've wanted to schedule this joint workshop for a long time, actually back before Christina termed off the board. Um, and we just haven't been able to get to it until this meeting.
So, okay, just another procedure question.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so FOP can talk to the city about issues it feels are um, bargaining issues, right?
Sure.
So it can do that. It can do that in advance of a formal grievance process?
Yeah, they can make their opinion known as to what they believe needs to be bargained and-
And that's what they did in, in March, right? They said, hey, city, here's how we feel about a couple of these issues that the board is suggesting. Here's some updates and things we'd, we'd like to change. Okay. The city can then go back to the FOP, if I'm right, and say, hey, great, we love these, we disagree with these and, and have a good dialogue.
Absolutely.
Right. That can be outside of a formal grievance process.
Correct. And is my preference.
Great. Mine too. Absolutely. Um, additionally, as happened in this case, we could have a board that is saying to the city, hey, city, here's some things we think would be really good. And the city can then convey those things to the FOP and say, hey, we, as a city, would like these things. What do you think, FOP? And there can be a good dialogue between the city and FOP, right?
Correct. That discussion is between me and the FOP.
And FOP. Exactly. So could it be possible for all three of these groups to be in the same room? Okay. Alan's shaking his head.
No.
Okay. So why not? Why does it have to be a telephone game? Why can't it be a-
Cause they're, they're a bargaining unit and there's only two parties to that bargaining unit. It's us and them. That's a-
But the board is giving the city ideas.
Because, because the FOP will not collectively bargain or bargain a matter with anyone outside of the parties.
Management, management has rights, right, under the statutes and so does the FOP. They can talk to each other and deal with these things informally, but you can't bring in a third party at that point to, you can't add a third party to the process. It's a-
There can't be a kumbaya moment.
Right? Okay. So all good. Always looking for the kumbaya. That's just the pastor in me, the preacher.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Um, so, uh, so great. And what, uh, if I'm understanding can happen is the city can get input from commission, from boards and so forth as the city engages in discussions with FOP.
Absolutely. And I try to. And that's what forms a good recommendation that has a chance of passing the commission's muster.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. So when the board gets the feedback from FOP at their, you know, hopefully today or tomorrow, whenever it's sent to them, they can then, uh, respond back to the city and say, hey, here's, here's what we think about the feedback we've been given. Right?
They can respond collectively as a body.
Yep. Exactly. So that's what I would encourage. Board, does that make sense or?
Makes perfect sense. Once we get the communication, we will act as we have not received the communication.
I, I know that. That's what, yeah, that's what we're, we're fixing. So that then feedback will go back to the city. Then the city can, Chris, you can then engage with FOP to see if you can come to a, you know, agreement or what, what seems to work.
Correct.
Right? And then that kind of, hopefully that collective kind of alignment would then come to us as a commission.
If there's a collective alignment, if there's no collective-
And if there's not, then I just have to make a decision and bring what forward I want to recommend and then you all can tell me it's a good idea or not.
Perfect.
I, I would still like to be a part of this whole conversation and keep the April meeting like we said, so they can get started on it. But then I want it to come back to us so we can also be a part of the conversation.
That's what we're agreeing on.
Okay.
And although, and Chris brings it back to us. Yeah. Chris brings it back to us.
You guys can do a little bit of the heavy lifting now when you get the report from FOP and then we all discuss.
And then we work it together. Yeah.
Just, just to note on that though, with just a little tweak is certainly they can discuss it. We can attend the meetings. I have a representative there at every meeting and the manager can as well. We'll get the feedback from them from there. But any communications though, formal communications need to go to you as a commission. So in conjunction to us getting that feedback from the meetings, they should always to the extent that they want to communicate that to the city, as you've stated, that's communicated to you, not, not us.
As a commission or commissioners individually?
The, the, the board can only speak as in one voice, right? So they communicate to you as a board through our normal communications that we get. So it should be done that way. But again, the manager and I will get the immediate feedback from the meeting and we start working with the FOP because we'll know.
Yeah. Great.
I just want to make sure any formal communications aren't directed to the city manager. They come to you.
Directing to the mission. Great. That all sounds, I think that's, is that, you good? Okay. Great.
So is Virginia Smith here in the audience? She had asked to speak. Okay. All right. So we will, uh, we will resume this discussion.
We had other things to cover. We had a couple of other things to cover.
Okay. Go right ahead.
So one of the issues, I think this is best suited for our new chief. We received the annual reports in 2020 on the response to resistance and our board came up with some questions about that. And the answers that we got were kind of just like, yes, we're doing that, but that wasn't consistent with what we were told. So, um, I want to convey this to the chief so that he's aware this is what we're asking for in those annual reports. Is chief here?
Chief is here. Chief, can you come up to the podium, please?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So, um, there was just a couple of things. So one of the things that we noticed in the 2020 response to resistance report was that from the prior year, there was a 14.9% increase in holding success at gunpoint. So we asked questions of what's the tipping point when we analyze that an increase is too much? We asked, who are we holding at gunpoint in that 14.9% increase? How do we reduce that? What kind of safety measures are in place so that when you see an increase, you know, I need to look at that? So when we asked that question, we didn't get anywhere. And then there was some transition in leadership. Um, another thing that we pointed out that we were told wasn't tracked, that we provided some feedback on, was that when you look at that annual report on the use of force, there was nothing that appeared to track the potential disparity of use of force. So nothing said more or less force is used on black and brown folks, this ethnicity, this gender. So, so just knowing the numbers are not enough. We need to know who? And you need to make sure there's, there's no disparities in that force. And we've never been told that.
So just if I hear you're saying there's not been any thorough analysis of the data, there's just been percentages provided to you?
Correct. And so then when we would ask, what's this, what's that, we would kind of get nothing. Then when we made the recommendation, we got a summary answer. And I will, like I said, it was during the transition process that yes, we're doing that. But nobody came back and said, don't worry, it's all even across the board. Or here was the reason for this. Or when it increases 5% that we're holding people at gunpoint, that's when we're like, let's do something about that. You gotta, you've-
So chief, is this something that you can respond to?
In the moment or?
No, no. It's, it's after this meeting. Is this, is, do you have that technical data to be able to respond to the demographic question that they're seeking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We have the information as it relates to the demographics to who we use for.
Is this something that you can release to the board then?
Yeah. But are you asking to provide more of a, what is our benchmark to, to address it?
Well, yeah, well, both. Well, first of all, if you're not keeping track of any disparities, how are you going to address it? Right?
Right.
So you need to be keeping track of-
Assuming there is a disparity.
Right. But you need to be keeping track of it. And then if you're keeping track of it, how are you addressing it? And when you see an uptick in use of force, what is, what is a red flag for you? And what do you do to address it? I think that the value of these annual reports would make the community feel much better about them if they knew that all things are equal or, you know, that there's a plan for things. But just saying, holding people at gunpoint went up 14.9%, I don't think that does what you're looking to do in this community.
Agreed. Okay. Yes, I can provide that data.
Okay. Do you have another, was there another item?
I did not.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Reichner?
Yes, sir. Uh, what I would like to do is ask the commission to give us direction on the extent to which you want this board to get involved in reviewing policies. The ordinance currently reads, the citizens' police review board shall at the request of the city manager or the chief of police or when a matter comes to the attention of the board, review police department policies and make recommendations to the city manager and the chief of police, which reflect the best interests of the citizens of the city of Fort Lauderdale and the community at large. With regard to facial recognition policies, with regard to driver's license tag readers. You know, those are things that sometimes come to the attention of the board and we make inquiries. Sometimes there's pushback that, you know, it's not ready for us to look at or we shouldn't look at every policy. And I have no desire to ask my colleagues to look at every policy that the police department puts forward. But to what degree do you want the citizens board, who you've empowered us to look at different things and, uh, police actions and internal affairs investigations, do you want us to look at facial recognition policies? Uh, the board is a qualified board. There's at least three attorneys. There's one retired police officer. There's a prior court administrator. You know, we come from various professional backgrounds. We have input that we can give that would be worthwhile. To what degree do you want us to share what we think? And to what degree do you want the police department to share with us to get the feedback?
Is it possible, is it possible for you to make that request of the commission as to the, the areas of concern? That you would like to expand the purview of your board so that the, this commission can then respond? Because I don't know if anyone on the commission right now, you, but, but they can all speak up on their own. But I don't know if anyone on the commission right now is prepared to talk about expanding or redefining the scope of the board. But I know I would welcome anything that you might have to offer in terms of, because all these things are new, new technologies. 25 years ago, we didn't have facial recognition, you know? So, uh, so there are new technologies and new opportunities here. And so, I mean, I invite any member of this commission to respond to you, but I don't think I personally can't.
I wasn't asking for something today. Clearly not.
Why don't you make recommendations so that the commission can review it and we can bring it up when we have the conference meeting?
And Mayor, just want to, one comment to that, uh, you know, I've been working a lot in my district on the license plate readers. It's a camera system that we've installed in, in neighborhoods and neighbors actually paid for them themselves. So what I get from my residents is that we want to use whatever technology we can to help keep our crime down. So I just want to make sure that you understand from a policy perspective from the commission, and they can speak on behalf of themselves. But from my perspective, I want to give the police department the tools that they, that they need. So I, I don't want to analyze something and be like, oh, my privacy is being this and that. I mean, I just want to say- I mean, I just want to say, are we keeping our city safe? And so I just want to make sure that we're just kind of sticking to the same goal, like keeping our community safe.
Commissioner, absolutely. I don't want to subvert any authority the police department has. I think we're all after the same thing.
All right, super, thanks.
They're able to get the information that's needed.
Right, and and do their jobs, keeping our, keeping us safe and keeping our crime down.
And and keep in mind also, again, as I said from the onset, our board is advisory only.
Sure, I recognize.
Recognize that and we're not trying to have it be, but that. But to the extent that the city would be interested in getting input from the citizens who they, you know, put on the board to get their feedback, it might be beneficial to.
No, I appreciate, I think, we appreciate any input as long as our goals are all the same, keep our city safe.
They are.
Christina?
I just want to point out that, um, the ordinance already has that authority in there. The re, the review board at the request of the city manager or the chief of police or when a matter comes to the attention of the board, we already have the authority in the ordinance to make a recommendation. So for example, the facial recognition software, that showed up in the news. We all became aware of it because it's newsworthy. We made a recommendation.
Okay.
It's already there. So I think really what Paul is saying is, you know, if there's something in particular that you're like, hey, let's have this other group look at it, then come to us and ask for it because we don't want to be told, well, it came to your attention in the wrong way. So you're not allowed to say anything about that.
All right, so why don't we give the commission the opportunity between now and our next meeting to come up with suggestions and we can discuss them then. All right? Anything further, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Wallow? Okay. Chief?
I'm still here. No, I didn't, just want to make it clear that, especially when we're talking about our policies, I've committed that we will provide all of them if they want, or specific ones. If they outline use of force, deadly force, faces, any of those outward impacting policies that we have in place, they, they're absolutely going to receive them to provide that impact. They did it on the facial recognition policy. They'll do it on the use of force policy. Any of those high liability topics, uh, should have their involvement and I've welcomed that. And we'll ensure that we provide that to them. If they want to formalize it in the process of the commission or in other ways or another venue, then we can do that as well. So we're willing, from the police department's perspective, to have that participation and that engagement that we have thus far and will continue to do so. But there needs to be a more formalized process for everybody to feel comfortable that that will constantly occur. Then I'm okay with that as well.
Okay, very good. All right, that concludes this workshop. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of your being here. Thank you again.
Thank you for your work.
You want to take a five-minute break before we go into our next workshop?
Keep it going, keep it going.
The vice mayor has already decided.
Oh, vice mayor left.
Take a five-minute break.